Thank you. My name is Rick Abar. I am a research analyst of the South Bay Consortium and today we're going to do a, I can share my screen here. A deeper dive into the South Bay Consortium for Adult Education's quarterly data study sessions. Today is the 25th. We originally did this Cape Summit presentation back in October. And they were kind enough to reach out to us to ask if we could take another spin, go into a couple of topics in a little bit more detail, and then discuss sort of what's gone on between then and now and how we've leveraged the data study session for our three-year planning process. So without any further intro, I will jump right in. So as per usual for me, I tend to at least be talking one or two slides ahead of what's actually on the screen, but I always try to do my best not to do that. This is going to be our welcome. You get to meet our team. We're going to talk about a little bit about why we started doing this. We'll review very quickly sort of what we talked about in October. We're going to dive a little bit deeper into a topic that came up then, which was how do we analyze the adult ed and the community college data together? That was identified in response to that summit presentation as being an area that people are a lot, are very interested in because it's, it's not super straightforward. We're going to talk about how we evolved the session this year for the three-year planning, like I mentioned, and then a little bit about what are we going to do in the future? We're going to have time for a question and answer, not only at the end, but also at the end of every section. We're not a super huge group today. And when I present, I like to invite people to raise their hands, come off mute, turn on their camera, and ask kind of questions on the fly. What I will say is if the question turns into a deep topic that kind of deviates away from where we are in the flow of the presentation, we may pause on it and come back to it later. So don't be shy. Feel free to pop in. If we don't see questions in the chat, we'll try to get to those during the break time. But again, if you feel like it, go ahead. You are invited to pop yourself off of mute to ask questions. Our team, Brenda Flores is our data and accountability specialist representing the adult schools. Unfortunately, she was not able to join us today. And my name is Rick Abar. I'm a research analyst full-time for the consortium and I'm situated at San Jose Evergreen Community College District. And I'll kick it to Elsa to introduce herself.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy to be with you and thank you to Cape Tab for inviting us to do this presentation. My name is Elsa Pollard. I'm the Director of the South Bay Consortium for Adult Education. I know there are a couple of consortia who have South Bay in their name. So we're the one in San Jose, California. We have five adult schools amongst our membership and four community colleges who are part of two community college districts. So things get complicated pretty quickly with two college districts and five adult schools. But hopefully we'll be able to to clarify a little bit how we handle our data in our presentation today.
Great. Thank you. And this is, this is, we'll have you kick this off, I think, right? Why we started doing this?
Absolutely. So why did we start doing this? We actually go back to the previous three-year planning process for the, the origin of our data study sessions. And three years ago, when we did our planning, we really identified some data gaps and noticed that our, our data could be a lot better than it was and that we didn't really have the capacity to look at our data collectively as a consortium, or let alone do some analysis and have some data-informed decision-making processes embedded in our plan. So as part of that three-year plan, the current three-year plan, some of the goals were to really focus on consistency in data collection across our members, consistency in data collection, data entry and data reporting, because the data that comes out is only as good as what you come in. And if there's no consistency across our members, then we're not really comparing apples to apples. So we wanted to get a lot better at at data collection, entry and reporting. We also wanted to be, become a more data-informed consortium when it comes to programmatic decision-making and accountability for our members. So that all starts with just having the right data going into our system and then being able to, to answer the questions that we have around are, are programs effective? Are we doing what we are supposed to do? What is working? What is not working? How can we tweak and make adjustments to improve our, our programs? And then finally, we wanted to invest in our data capacity as a consortium to do all that. We're a larger consortium, but we didn't really have a strong capacity at the consortium level yet. So we decided in some strategies in that plan were to continue to invest and grow our data team. So our team of two, Brenda and Rick, that you saw on the previous slide. We also then started having these quarterly data study sessions, which is the topic of our presentation today. And we created what is called a data community of practice. And that is a group that with data administrators from each of our members that meets regularly to discuss data entry, collection and reporting. So that has been another space for us to have conversations about our data. With that in place, we are really seeing the benefits of that focus on, on, on data. We were able to build and still are building our collective data literacy, as I like to call it, but for everyone, all the members to understand what we mean when we talk about adult data, community college data, how data flows across our consortium, all the way from our student information system to what eventually shows up in Launch Board and Nova, just conceptually for people to understand what that all means. We've been able to have more robust conversations around member accountability and member effectiveness. It has been hugely beneficial in strategic planning, especially in this year, in this three-year planning year, and we'll go into much more detail later on in this presentation on how we've leveraged the data study sessions for the three-year planning process. It has helped us make informed program decisions and it has even helped our members when they have to go through accreditation and when they go through WASC visits. These data study sessions have been a great resource for them to get information that feeds back into their, into their accreditation processes. So we've had a nice kind of cycle or circle between consortium work and individual agency work. So overall, we're seeing a lot of benefits. We're starting to, to, to see the, the fruits of our labor. And so we hope we'll be able to share some of that with you today. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Rick. We'll talk to you in more detail about our data study sessions.
Great. Thank you, Elsa. A lot of what you're going to see today is lifted right from previous data study sessions, because the idea is that we want to give you kind of a glimpse of what does it feel like to sit there with us when we, when we do this. Now, part of that is so that you can, you can get an idea of the way that we present the information and the goals, the, the things that we're trying to get out of it. But so as I go through, you'll see a few different, you'll see slides that may look out of context in a presentation about something. And it's because these are actually lifted right from data study sessions and I've updated some of the languages need be. When I first joined the consortium in October of 2019 and data study sessions were relatively new at that point. And they were often a, well, let's grab everybody's data and we'll show a bunch of graphs about our enrollment and, and demographics and, and how those things looked and comparing year over year. And when I joined and Brenda and I sat down with Elsa and the leadership team, we realized that the, the steering committee at our consortium is, is composed of a lot of folks who are administrators who, who work, they, they are in that level where they're working in the programs or they're running their adult schools and they're very in touch with what's actually going on on the ground in their school. But a lot of these consortia level topics, especially as it comes to like, what is Cape? How does it relate to Weowah? What are these concepts mean? What do our data systems look like? That there wasn't really a shared understanding of, of, of kind of like, how, what is the, the, the bedrock on which any data work is going to be built? And so being able to have rich conversations about our numbers was going to be better informed if we kind of level set early. And, and in the initial first few data study sessions, it was early and often where we built some infrastructure models and we, we talked about the connections of concepts and processes. And we dove into certain key concepts like transitions. Everybody, transitions is a big thing. We're all focused on. We've been asked to focus on it. It's, it's right there in our ed code. So what I want to show first is, is kind of some of the models that we made so we could, we could try to level set on this. So a key thing is to understand the data environment. There's a lot of staff at our schools who are responsible for different jobs. It's, it's rare unless the, the house that you're particularly working in is quite small to have any one or more than one person have a real overarching picture of the whole situation. Then if you throw seven of those agencies together in a room, we felt like it was really important to have a shared understanding. So just simple models like this where you start with your, if we want to be able to refer to things like upstream systems and downstream systems, we need people to be able to visualize kind of what we're talking about. So this was something that we had showed to give people an idea that like the data, if you're missing data from a particular place, there's a chain of events that could possibly be causing it to be missing from there. And if, if something's not in Tops Pro, it might not be because, you know, where is it actually missing from? Is it missing from Tops Pro or did it not import to Tops Pro because it was missing from the upstream system? So we would, we would kind of show models like this and this would give us a lot to talk about. It gives people a, a tool to understand a complex system in a simple way. If you don't have that, it's easy to draw false narrative like about why data is missing in certain places. So this is something that we felt has been strong for us is to build this literacy component like Elsa talked about with understanding the infrastructure. Understanding the infrastructure is one thing, but understanding, well, how do the concepts that we care about fit into that infrastructure is something else. So we focused on this quite a bit early. Do we all have a precise shared definition of Cape and Weowah outcomes? Can we identify those things conceptually in our data systems throughout the input process? So from data entry, when a student first enrolls to the day-to-day data gathering that happens, attendance, assignments, all those things, testing, how that data flows from the student information system via the entry processes into the downstream systems? And what does that end up looking like on the other side when you look at things like Launch Board and other types of, of reporting that you work on with, with WASC or that we're now working on with the Cape Office? Understanding conceptually how to track your information through the systems needs to be sort of aligned with your technical understanding of how the systems actually talk to each other. So this is another model that we looked at to sort of give people an idea of how the data team thinks about its work on, on a 30,000-foot view. And I'd mentioned that the transitions being a big deal. We also felt like people needed a shared model of what we meant when we were talking about a transition. Like we, we kept calling them a big T transition because it isn't just, hey, did a student who was attending one school start attending another school? It was, are they attending ascending programs and what type of programs are they attending? What types of things are eligible to be counted as a big T transition? This was a great tool for us to share with people so they could, you know, it, it definitely headed off a bunch of questions of, hey, is something, something to something a transition? It was nice to be able to say, to, to hear those questions sort of reduced because people were able to point at something where they could, where they could visualize it. I know that when I first started and I was new to California adult ed, this concept was definitely confusing to me. So maybe I was the first person that this picture helped. Another piece that we talked about in October was sort of the general idea of what a data study session looks like. It only has a few components that we meet through quarterly and talk about. We provide updates as a data team. So what have we been working on? We also give updates on our data community of practice. We also talk about, hey, we, we got the beginning of your letter from the Cape Office or this newsletter had a change in due date. You all need to pay attention to, stuff like that. Then we do a quarterly data dive, which we'll get into in more detail during the alignment conversation. But that has been the consistent thing for us. I think it was even February 2020, we, we, we rolled out our new quarterly data visualizations and we've been adding to that visualization every single quarter since then. So I think we were thinking back, that gives us, we didn't miss any due to COVID, even though we did go online. So it gives us roughly eight data study sessions where we've been looking at the same type of visualization. And that has been extremely helpful so that people get used to a relatively complex graph and, and can, can observe things about our group as a whole, as well as their agency and how it fits in. We always have, well, we don't always, but we tend to have some ad hoc visualizations to drive discussion depending on sort of the topic of the month. Before we started really turning that, that discretionary time at three-year planning. I'd already mentioned that we would often talk about Cape data and accountability updates. But there was always room to sort of have that back half of the data study session. They run for about two hours and they usually run on the same day that we have a steering committee meeting. And we would take the first hour to do the updates and the data dive and then spend the second hour working through a specific project that we wanted feedback from the larger group on, or a deep dive on like bridge courses. Hey, how many at our community college, we had X number of students enrolled in non-credit ESL over the last three years? How many of them ended up enrolling in a four-credit course? If it was a specific non-credit CTE course, how many of them ended up enrolling in the credit program that corresponded to that course? Those kinds of topics. Those, this is the, the sort of the back half of the data study session is where we talk about that stuff. We also kind of, of, in, in October, we, we wanted to highlight the things that we thought had been going well. And Elsa had mentioned a few of the benefits. Just to kind of underscore the things that we think have been going well, the consistent visible consortium level data sharing has definitely ensured that a lot of people feel more ownership over what's going into their reports that we look at every quarter. So we've had a lot of great conversations with schools following the graphs where they would say, hey, this number doesn't look right. And I'll get a little specific about that in a bit. It's also been a great place to have conversations about the, the data ops side of the house, which often doesn't really get a lot of daylight. If, if your assessment and your data system and your IT is kind of working relatively well, it's usually just laying in the background and it was great to be able to give open space with administrators and data and tech staff in these sessions to say, hey, there's this thing that's going on with Tops Pro that I don't understand. And someone from a different agency says, hey, you know what? I've been having the same problem. So it's provided an opportunity for people to share best practices. Quarterly submissions have absolutely definitely gotten better, I would say. It's also provided a forum for us to understand why this is hard to do. And we'll get into that more specifically during the alignment conversation. We ended our, our October summit with sort of a, if you wanted to do something like this, what would we suggest that you focus on? Obviously, we're, we're fortunate to have this bandwidth to be able to do this. And, and it was a priority that this consortium laid out being relatively good-sized and complex with the number of schools. But anybody can do a similar periodic exercise where you all get together and look at data. The key is to be very goal-oriented. So what do you want to look at? Like, what's the first thing you want to do? If you always start with the, with the goal, like what do I want to walk away from a, if I'm going to get everybody in my consortium together, my, not just my steering committee members, but open it up to faculty and transition specialists and classified staff, if I'm going to get them all in a room to, to look at our data, what is the thing I want them to walk away with? Or what do I want to walk away with that they have contributed to during that process? The other thing that I would really strongly keep in mind is like, what is the data literacy level? I, I'm a big believer in a little bit goes a long way. It's better to look at one graph and have a great 20-minute conversation than it is to look at 20 graphs and not hear a word from anybody in the audience. The other things to keep in mind are like, what are reasonable data to extract from your systems, given the possible differences that you have in those systems? So things just as simple as enrollment, your demographics, so you know, gender, race, age, those kinds of things. And then outcomes, if, if that's something that's super important, which it's important to all of us, but they, those can also be very tricky to, to compare apples to apples between agencies. So it's just kind of a simple decision-making process. Like what do I want to walk away with? And what's reasonable for me to extract, given my bandwidth? Like, what would I want to look at and where would I get it is essentially the, the big point here. I would say, and I'll say this later and I'll say it again, but don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I'll get a little bit more specific about when, when we talk about alignment, how asking yourself, if I'm comparing enrollment between two different schools, can I actually logically do that? So that's kind of a little teaser for the next section. This is a time where we're going to take a little stretch break and ask questions. I talk fast and we've been moving pretty fast. So I'd say everybody feel free. It's lunchtime. I'm sure people are kind of eating and going through their day as they're doing this. I would give everybody six minutes to hop up and take a break or to come off mute and ask questions or type your questions in the chat if you'd like to. We'll get back together and get going at 12:28 and change.
Yes, Carla from a Carrick Capital Adult Education Consortium. And I have a quick question. In your opening slide, you had, that you had identified data gaps. And can you just give me some examples of what those data gaps were, if you don't mind?
I think I'll actually put this to Elsa.
Yeah, I can, I can take that one. Hi Carla, nice to see you. It was, we saw inconsistencies when we looked at our Cape summary report on like how members were understanding definitions and that led to people numbers showing up under, and at the time it was, it wasn't all categorized as workforce prep, right? And it was, we had several more categories related to workforce. And so we saw just inconsistencies in how people were counting those students and, and those outcomes in it. So that was one example. Then other, it was mostly in the outcome section. I'd say especially around the workforce outcomes, inconsistencies. Other than that, and I'm thinking, that's the example that comes to mind immediately. And then just not having, not having a forum to, to talk about data together.
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
The outcomes in particular are always tricky. Especially for like, when you're just looking at a Tops Pro update form, there's, that's basically self-reported data, right? So is, we were actually really inspired by the work that you did at Carrick to get that stuff aligned. We tried to get our own kind of like version of that project going and, and COVID really took a lot of the wind out of our sails on that. But it is, it is challenging, right? Like which of these bubbles correspond to which of these outcomes for Cape versus which are Weowah relevant versus we don't know how this is being counted? You know, so we were very inspired. You, you did some strong work up there.
Well, that, that is credit to Bronca and Bethany, for sure, for sure, for sure. But even so, with, with all those wonderful resources they set up for us, we're still, we're still, we're still getting inconsistencies ourselves. And we, one of the inconsistencies we found recently was in, we, we ran a Cape outcome report and we had for one, one school year, one trend, one, one ESL student as enrolled in secondary where we know that was completely incorrect. And you know, we, we opened this, this bucket of, of items that need attention is how to capture some of those types of outcomes as well, because it's not really one of the post-transitions program outcomes, but it is, it does come out in the report as, as students that are enrolled in secondary. And again, given that our ESL population is our largest population, I feel we need to pay some attention in capturing that information of students that are exiting ESL and moving into ASC and, and then support them with services as well. So more work to do. So I appreciate the, the presentation today and the information. Thank you, Rick and Elise.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question.
Hi Rick and Elsa. I just wanted to say hi. I was like, okay, I get this. I was part of it a little bit. And then I want to learn what all you guys did as moving forward. But part of me was like, I will learn and it will give me a chance to say hi to Rick and Elsa. So hello, I hope you're all doing well.
Definitely. Hope things are going well for you in your, in your new, in your new role.
Yes, they are. It's a lot of learning. And I can definitely say we can use all this information, especially the data work and the transitions, how it was built at South Bay Consortium. Definitely, I keep pushing for that. Just model, just see, you know, pick up pieces. So definitely there's a lot of good work that happened in South Bay. So thank you, Rick and Elsa, for all your support.
You're welcome. And yeah, hopefully there'll be some good stuff for you in the rest of this. And you know, you can always drop us a line. And that, that is true for everyone here. I definitely do not mind being a resource to our community. It's a, it's a, it's a lot of, it's tough work and everybody's kind of learning how to all do it together. So, but we'll, we'll get there towards the end. That's a good time to segue back into this. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to kind of shake it out a little bit. One of the, when, when, when we got asked to come back and do a deeper dive on this, one of the, of the emphasis that we were asked to make based on feedback from that session was to talk more about how we align adult ed and community college data. And it is a process and I can see why it is an area of concern. It took quite a bit of, of thought and I guess, sort of, of compromise with ourselves in terms of what, what is the philosophy with which we're going to use to choose how we put everybody's data in the same graph? Align it, alignment makes it sound real fancy. When at the end of the day, what we're talking about is can I display a graph on a screen for a, a group of practitioners, administrators, faculty, transition specialists from adult schools and from community colleges and feel confident that to the best of our ability, that it's logical to compare that data? That's a, it's a big question and it's hard to do. So we're going to talk about what we decided to do and why it's hard. And there's definitely still room for us to all grow, but let's, let's see what shakes out and if this is useful for folks. So how do we determine what data to look at quarterly? This is a busy slide, but there's, there's a lot of kind of thoughts I want to get on this, out on this before we start looking at the graphs. We, we, I think we, most of us know intrinsically that the business processes for enrollment and, and, and assessment are very different at the adult schools and the community colleges. Adult schools tend to be open entry and exit and they tend to be testing to promote. So moving from level to level happens when the student's ready to do that in large part. Obviously, I'm, I'm overgeneralizing here, but just to say that the, the systems themselves interface with the student much differently. I think anybody who's worked with having adults transition into the more rigid structure of courses at the community colleges where they start on this day and they end on this day and they are at this time and you have to go. It can be a lot for students who are adults are busy. A lot, they, they, a lot of them have families, a lot of them have jobs, multiple jobs, are, are still trying to learn English or get acclimated to life in this country. And, and the, some systems are more conducive to success than others. Assessment is non-standard for an educational functional level game at the college. It can be inferred by a course progression based on coding in MIS. So it, it, we're playing different sports and trying to get the scores to mean something when we add them together, like comparing five hockey teams and five soccer teams and who scored the most and having that make sense, right? So it is tricky. So it is tricky. Accountability considerations are also really important because we want to do this. Why do we want to do this? We want to know how we're doing in the eyes of Cape. Therefore, we need to have a shared understanding of ideas, like what is an individual served versus what is a participant? How are program areas designated and reported at the, are they designated by our systems, i.e. TOPS Pro? Or are they designated after the fact for college data like by me? Because they don't have any fields for that in the college data warehouse. So where did we land on how to start looking at our data? We landed on a seat count for participants. So to us, this had the most operational implication. Like if you're looking at college enrollment at Data Mart, you're going to see duplicated students. You're going to see core course enrollment, not head counts or FTEs. So seat count to us was how many, regardless of, of the, how many courses an individual is taking, how many classroom seats are being taken up in what program areas? We also chose to do a enrollment cutoff at the participant level because that tended to be more stable. At least in terms of, of sort of initial analysis of historical data when we were looking at, how do we assess if we can compare students who have enrolled in an adult school for less than 11 hours or have gotten a service versus college where we may not get attendance for a student who didn't enroll in a course until they got, until they, the course gets to census day. If we don't have a grade and we don't have any hours, all we have is an enrollment, we don't really know anything. So additionally, the, the student support systems where we would log services are not always connected to the same data sources as course enrollment at the colleges. So it can be even be hard to get that. So this was why we said, look, the most apples to apples thing we can do to compare our enrollment at the adult schools and the community colleges by looking at seat count for participants. The hours of engagement is more stable and there's, there's sufficient operational implications to want to bother to do that. So what does that look like in graphical form? I'm gonna give everybody a minute to look at this because it's, it's a lot. And, and like I said, our consortium has had now eight quarters to practice looking at this. Essentially, what we're looking at, and I'll frame it for you while you look, is we take cumulative program area enrollment, so seat count for participants. And we watched that accumulate over the course of the year. This was inspired by the Cape summary report in TOPS Pro. Most, we have five adult schools. They're used to looking at these reports. And we, we felt that we could conform the college data to the same idea. Additionally, because a lot of our data points are, hey, how many blanks did you blank last year? It made sense to watch how these numbers changed year over year. So what you're looking at here, and I apologize if the bottom of the slide is cut off, what it's intended to display is school one, school two, school three, school four, school five, school six, school seven, so that we're not outing anybody or, or calling anyone out in terms of enrollment sizes and stuff like that. But really, what, what we're looking at is the bars represent the total enrollment of people of students who've made it to 12 hours in any sum of program areas up until the end of that quarter. And then how that stacks up over the year. The line is all of the bars summed. And this allows us to look at that every quarter for three years. What you will notice is this was pre and post-COVID. So FY 2019 is the 1819 school year, 1920 is the 1920 school year, and then 2021 is the 2021 school year. This has been very helpful for us to do quite a few things. Elsa mentioned that there was just, there was often people looking at the data and saying, I don't think that's what's really going on at my school. The data is wrong. We had, in the risk of talking over a point later down the road, we also had our colleges participating in a WEOA coalition up through 1920, which meant data for those folks was being pulled from two sources. So we were able, through looking year over year, we're able to see and identify and get our, our stakeholders used to the places where that data stabilizes. And those numbers come together as well as to be able to even see effects, like we didn't add a lot of enrollment in June of, in quarter four of 2020 because COVID. We all had to shut down. Nobody was shunting students from their roles, but we weren't seeing that typical uptick of 1500 or so, 1300, 1500 or so new enrollments in the fourth quarter. I want to pause here and see if anybody has any questions. This is, again, this is a lot to look at and, and that's what made this journey fun was we're looking at functionally, we're looking at three different dimensions. We're looking at time, we're looking at membership and we're looking at, well, we're looking at time in two different dimensions and we're looking at our membership and summing that up. So there's a lot going on here. I'll just pause for a second to see if anybody has any questions. And I'll end with one more benefit. All right. Well, what I will say is, I've been amazed and just so pleased with, especially for our folks who've been with our steering committee for the entirety of this time, that they're getting, they're used to looking at this now. I don't know if they would have described them as data themselves as super data literate before we started doing this. This has become old hat and it's great to see because this is a foundation you can build on. The, the next slide that we always look at every quarter is we take that same cumulative enrollment and we break it out by program area. So this is through quarter four, for those same three program years, 1819, 1920, and 2021. And we have this broken out by program area. This is always a great slide for several reasons. My favorite one is because I'll always get an email or a text or a private message in, in Zoom. Hey, I, I see I have 70 K-12 success students. I shouldn't have any. I need to figure out why, why you're getting that number. Or, hey, my ABE ASC number doesn't look right. Can you help us figure out why? So I know without a doubt that it's improved, folks. It, it, TOPS Pro is not usually our most upstream systems. Most folks are working with ASAP or Ayers or, or maybe still Canvas, a wide variety of upstream systems where their teachers and their enrollment folks are entering data. So even just that one step between that upstream system and TOPS Pro, a lot can happen between those two steps. It's not as straightforward as, as everyone from either of those vendors would like to claim it is. So this has been a great touch point for people to, to improve their numbers. Instead of not, the, the other world is that nobody thinks about this. Nobody looks at it. It doesn't, nobody pays attention to it. They submit their end of year data and then wonder in 10 months why their launch board data looks wrong. Karen asked a question in the chat, not anymore Karen. So Karen asked the question, do all of our, our community colleges enter data into TOPS Pro? The answer is no. They had been attempting to do that when they were part of the WEOA coalition. That is extremely challenging to do. It requires a great deal of bandwidth between ITSS and the, and the, and the institutional effectiveness teams at the colleges to create special tools just to export that data. I will summarize that by saying that did not go great. It, it's better, we found it to be better to extract data from those systems and process it so that it does the same job as the, as the Cape summary report is doing in TOPS Pro. Does that answer your question? Oh wait, I'll, I'll move on real quick while we wait for. I will not be, and Karen just followed up, will we be sharing how we extract the data? I will not be diving deep into that, but I am very happy to have that conversation with you. That is super in the weeds. And if we have some time at the end, I'm happy to, to talk about it a little bit. But absolutely feel free to reach out to me because this is something that myself and other folks who have large non-credit populations at our community colleges can commiserate on the challenge for doing this. So, so we weren't, we're not going to go super far into it. In a second, I will talk about some of the considerations I had to make when I did that. So we'll go ahead and keep moving. Maybe I'll answer a little bit of some of your questions. But, but definitely we can dive deeper into this either later or offline. Oh, you're very welcome. So some notes on these, the business rules. The, it's too funny. This is just what we were talking about. The business rules are critical for, for discussion. I mentioned the feedback loop between folks and their, their own data. But another piece that I didn't even get to is are we even tagging the correct program areas? So one of our college admins reached out to me and said, hey, I don't see anybody in workforce prep. Why not? And we were like, well, let's go look at your export and figure out what your courses are being tagged as in terms of Cape program areas. And what we discovered was that they were using older nomenclature from back in the, we have three different highly distinct CTE groups as opposed to when Cape decided to lump them all under CTE. They had, they had older designations that were not being properly filtered into this report. So they were actually able to, to also find out at that time that there were classes that they had started subsequently that weren't even getting tagged with any program area. So they were like, oh, my gosh, we're undercounting by like 400 students because we're missing all the enrollment from several new courses we've added that were accidentally being tagged by their system as being in the other program area, which we're not counting here, others, anything that's not Cape. A big thing is the cadence of attendance submission. That is super challenging. Our adult school folks get their attendance into their data system very, very regularly, weekly, sometimes daily, definitely monthly. That stuff's in TOPS Pro. Often at our colleges, attendance is not submitted for a student until after the course has ended, which means quarter one and quarter four don't really, or I'm sorry, quarter three, don't really mean a whole lot for the community colleges because the semesters are summer, fall, and spring. Which means I have a bunch of enrollment in the fall in quarter one. And I have a bunch of enrollment in the spring in quarter three, but I have no attendance. So I can't tell you who's going to be a participant. So we've experimented with a variety of business rules, like I know from historical precedent that somewhere between 50 and 75% of those students are going to make it. So let's be conservative and count that at 50%. And then when that number bumps up after we get attendance, people feel good. So big bullet points here, are we doing a good job of collecting consistent data? We talked about that plenty and then I already mentioned the WEOA to not WEOA and the transition of using TOPS Pro and not using TOPS Pro at the colleges. That was a lot. That was a lot. Big takeaway that I want to, to get here is that, that if, this is not going to be perfect. It's the 80/20 rule. You will spend 20, 80% of your time trying to close that last 20% gap for getting that crazy SQL query from your college, the Lucian data system to really nail you down exactly what's going to correspond to your TOPS Pro data. When in reality, the more important thing is just check your business rules. Check the way that these things are being calculated. Does it make sense? There was a long while where colleges were being slightly undercounted because the definition for a participant in the eyes of Cape is any student who gets to 12 hours across a sum of any Cape program areas during a program year. TOPS Pro is doing that for you at the adult school. At the colleges, it is not. You have to manually tag each student who made it to 12 hours and ensure that if they don't meet 12 hours in any one particular course, that they're still getting counted. So the, the calculation becomes more challenging, but once you figure out that that's what you need to do, then you go ahead and do it and you're done. I mentioned the semesters and the quarters don't line up well. Certain other demographics are not going to line up well and, and we'll get into that a little bit more later. So things to pay attention to are where do you need to be exact and where can you have some flexibility? In terms of, of what am I pulling when I want to have a conversation with my whole group of folks, community college and adult ed? When I want to have a conversation that drives us to a revelation or gives the planning team feedback on an initiative? Where are times where it's okay to be a little flexible? Maybe just look at one side only and not the other and have the conversation get you out of the weeds. Because you, if the two categories for race and ethnicity are super different, you probably don't want to compare them. That's the example I'm going to talk about right now. We had a really rich discussion when we were trying to, to look at the impact of COVID on our enrollment. Just looking at the ethnicity, race, ethnicity demographic for our students. We did not fold community college data into this data set because I'm able to extract iPads race and ethnicity data and it's not the same designations. I don't feel comfortable crosswalking race and ethnicity designations between two systems when they're not the same for a whole that doesn't feel good. And then don't believe it's appropriate unless you have a very clear understanding of, of that you're going to do that correctly. We could have a whole 90-minute session on, on why these categories are problematic in and of themselves. We're not going to do that right now, but, but we were able to have a really rich conversation about the, the, the relative consistency between 1819 and 1920 in our Asian and Hispanic enrollment population and how that changed during the full year of COVID. We were able to have a super rich conversation about that, including the community college folks, just asking them to reflect on what they know about their institutions and they're still able to participate in the conversation. So what I want you to walk away with when it comes to alignment here is you, is you don't have to let, stop yourself if you can't do it with the math and the data. Get as close as you can and let the people that you want to participate in that conversation do the rest. And I promise you will still have a rich conversation. It's much more worth the time than it is to try to show a graph from each system and try to talk about things that you might not be able to really compare, especially if you're not interceding with age and other demographics like that. So that's sort of where we're going to die, where we're going to pause on the alignment conversation. I want to open it up for any other questions about this. If, if any of you throw me a super deep conversation like Karen, I may punt it. And, and Karen definitely throw me a message if you, if, if you're interested in going deeper on, on how I do that extraction from our community colleges. Spoiler alert, I can only see one. So they do it one way and I do it another way. Anne asked if we have discussed how each institution counts asynchronous work in attendance. We were very fortunate that most of our folks aligned in how they for adult schools, TOPS Pro basically only gave people three choices, which was either do this, do this, do this, when it came to how do you take attendance during, during, during COVID. Our understanding from talking to our agencies was they all, they, not only did they all choose the same thing, pretty much the same modality, but they were also tracking attendance in a relatively similar fashion. The colleges, fortunately, because college is the absolute, is a free, was a free for all during spring of 2020 and 2020, the 2021 program year. We were also fortunate that our colleges stuck to relatively the same idea, which was which was we are giving students a, a certain amount of attendance based on the work that was done in that class, if it's asynchronous. And there were also quite a few, a lot of the online instruction was shifted to synchronous online. There was, there was not a high percentage, especially in our program areas, of asynchronous classrooms. So like an ESL non-credit at a community college didn't go to Blackboard or, I'm just at Blackboard. Boy, that's, that's taking me back, colleague and have them, or Canvas and say, hey, call us when you're finished and we'll look at your coursework. Most, in most cases, that did not happen. So we were really lucky that we were able to dodge that, like, there's nothing we can do bullet that the state got into. I wish I had a super clever answer for you about how we solved an insanely challenging problem instead of that we, that we ducked and got lucky. So thank you for the question. And I, again, that is one where I can get into more detail if you're having certain issues and, and how we kind of worked with edge cases. But that's a little bit in the weeds. Again, we can put that to the end too, depending on how long it takes us to get through the rest.
No, thanks for sharing. I appreciate it.
No problem. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a really good question. And it scares me just to think about. So now I'll have something new to wake up in the middle of the night worrying about and going, oh, I hope that's not actually more of a problem than we think it is. Anything else going once, going twice? I'm going a little longer than I wanted, but I promise the rest of it doesn't feel as long as, as, as it may look when you, if you were to see the number of slides I have. We're going to get through them relatively quick. We're going to kind of do, here's where we do an overview of. We're going to get through them relatively quick. We're going to kind of do. Here's where we do an overview of after we got through our summer planning, it became very clear to Ilsa, and we had some hilarious conversations about how she was stealing our precious data study session time to talk about three year plans and all this stuff. It ended up being an absolutely wonderful synergy of the work that we do as a data team with the work that we needed to do as a consortium to build this three year plan, especially given all the new components. So that's what we're going to dive into now. I think this is, am I punting this to you, Elsa? I think I am.
Yes, yes, you are. And absolutely. So with this is a three year planning year, as you all know, and and you also know that the 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 three year plan that we're working on is is focused on data and has a lot of data and metrics and targets components to it. So as the person in charge of um, of overseeing that three year planning process for our consortium, I knew a year ago that we needed to have some robust conversations about data and about metrics in the next three year plan. So since we already had our quarterly data study sessions on the calendar, that was the 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 prime space and the forum for us to engage our consortium members in having those conversations. So yes, it was a bit of co-opting our data study sessions. We still did um, the standing um, data team updates and looking at our quarterly like data dive at each of our meetings, but then we use that second hour of our data study sessions to dive deeper into three year planning and and have those conversations without adding additional meetings to people's calendars, um, which was, I'm sure was appreciated by our members and not to have to add more three year planning meetings to their calendars than we already had. So our our process really mimicked the different phases in the 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 state's template for the three year plan. So we started out in the fall with our assessment phase, looking at our regional need, demographics and labor market information. We also wanted to assess our program capacity um, to respond to that regional need and demographics. What did we already have in place that we can build on? So looking at enrollment outcomes, programs and offered across our consortium members, and we wanted to look at that from a student perspective and and really think about how students navigate through our pathways and through our schools and colleges. So that was a lot of the work that we did in the fall. And then going into uh, 2022, we shifted into metric selection. So first order of business was for all of us to understand the three year plan metric definitions. What are we even talking about when you look at that list of mandatory optional metrics, consortium level metrics, agency level metrics? So we really had some robust conversation about, do we understand what these means? What these mean? Uh, and then we had a really good conversation, more of a philosophical conversation about like, how do we even select those metrics for the optional metrics? Do we align them with this with the emergent strategy emerging strategies in the plan? Or do we look at what are we, what do we feel confidence that we're able to track and able to to monitor? And so as with any good, good team effort, we can we landed somewhere in the middle and wanted to approach it, come to a compromise. And so we asked ourselves for each of the metrics, can we do it? Is that easy for us to track or is it difficult? And if we cannot track it, do we want to learn how to do it? And it's that learning mindset. I think that that's really been very valuable for us in those conversations because it's not because we're not yet able to track something well, something like transitions, for example, just to to throw one out there, that we don't need to learn how to do it. And in that learning, we're going to discover a lot more. And so we every time we every time we dive deeper into a metric, we end up having more questions than answers, but that is a good thing because then we are able to punt it back to 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 Holly and and Cape and to West Ed and and we have really good conversations about what all of this means. So it definitely is a learning process, but those metrics um, have to drive conversations about our operations and about our programs. So that's where we're heading headed. Once we kind of landed on, okay, we understand our definitions, our metric definitions, and we have an idea of like how we want to select them. We came up with a process to select um, metrics and to set goals and targets around them. And we had a bit of a like a Russian doll approach to that where we started as a as a whole group. And then we split off and having uh, individual member uh, conversations, which I still think is is one of the the best things we did in the three year planning process is to sit down with each of our members for two hours to look at um, our consortium uh, goals in the next three year plan and the metrics and targets and talk about what that meant for their agency specifically and then how they see themselves reflected in the plan. Uh, and then we came back with all of the members to look at, to summarize the conversations that we had and to bring it back holistically to look at it consortium wide. So we're going to share some more details on what that process looked like and how we're we're going to use that the tools that we developed in that process going forward. And then, of course, at at the in a couple of weeks from now, we'll end up with a finalized plan, and that's where we really are looking forward in the next three years to focus on continuous improvements and measure our progress against those goals. So we're still in a wrapping our minds around what that would look like and how we will continue to use our data study sessions to do exactly that. But it's it's really exciting to be able to be in this position and to be able to have the capacity to look at that and have that defined in our plan, what those goals and those metrics are. So um, Rick is gonna walk you through um, some more of the details on on what that looked like and what exactly we did in those uh, in those study sessions this year. So Rick, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, this is literally just the how with to to the what that that Elsa just described. We we kind of wanted to approach this with a, we'll get a lot more clarity on where our historical metrics stand much closer to the time we actually have to submit the plan. And as other parts of the plan, there are data related considerations that we really want stakeholder feedback, and we really want to have these conversations as a big group. So early on, we took the opportunity to introduce the fact that this new three year plan has metrics that we have to care about. And that we have to set goals around. But we also began because we wanted to dive real deep into this, and you don't have a ton of time in the world, even with an hour or so, once a quarter. A a large component was that we all understood the composition of our region and the educational need within it, as well as how we were positioned to meet that need, given the services we already provide and the students that we're already serving. So the cadence of this was basically introduce the metrics and start that regional need exercise. We had a real chunky meeting in November where we talked about alignment because we had gotten some clarity on data definitions. We finished off our regional need exercise, and we also started folding in labor market data because that is a critical component of the need analysis. Knowing where we were headed in February, we just focused on the metrics. We talked about the definitions. Who's current understanding of these metrics is what and where do people feel comfortable? Some great group discussions were had there. And then May, we did the roundup of the individual member level meetings that Elsa talked about where we showed everybody what what the infrastructure was going to be like to track this stuff and and where that was going to go, where that had gone during the planning meetings and where we're going to take that going forward. So I mentioned earlier that a lot of these slides are ripped directly from those meetings. Any slide that you see that says the the date, so September 21 or or February 22, that slide was effectively just pulled from that presentation so that we can give you kind of an overview of the flow and show you some of the things we did in case you're like, hey, that's cool. I want to do that. Or that brings up an interesting question. I want to talk about that. So I'm going to get into these, each of these sort of one by one, but once we get into the specificity, we're going to move a little bit quick. So September, we already talked about this plenty. We're not going to spend a ton of time with more exposition. But there were a lot of Cape webinars that happened in May and in June that were like, hey, you get this new three year plan coming and it's going to be different. So we wanted to make sure that we introduced that to everybody early on in September because we knew we're going to have to spend this year talking about it. We also wanted to frame the regional need evaluation and how we were going to do that because in the past, for the previous two annual plans, I had with Ilsa and I had basically cordoned ourselves off and done different types of regional need analysis where we either went super deep on ACS data and and said, there's this many people in the region who need blank and or we had basically told the story of why life was really hard now because COVID, and here's why. It's super expensive to live here and we went real deep on the narrative about why adult education was such a huge need in the region for a variety of factors. We wanted everyone to participate in this part of the conversation. It's it was no longer just one thing or two things to fill out on the annual plan. It was, hey, this is something that we all need to be aware of because we're going to build strategies as a group to address this. So we wanted to set the table early. How we did that? We we primed everybody with what is the intent of this? So what I just said, what I just spoke about, the intent, why are we doing this together now? And to introduce to everyone what some of the tools are that we can have and will use to do this. Census.gov, labor market information and our own internal data. We tried to level set with just what does our region look like? We got a lot of zip codes in here and it's kind of a hot mess. So do we all know where our school lives in terms of these zip codes? We showed everybody what it looked like to extract data from census.gov, the American Community Survey data. We wanted people to be aware of what that meant. The restrictions on that data. These are five year estimates from pre-COVID. We need people to be aware of this stuff. Yeah, yes, that is true, but it's the best we have and it's functionally the standard. Additionally, we wanted to show what it take, what it looks like if you take that data out and graph it. We're able to look at the East Side Union High School District as a uh, option to uh, filter in ACS data. So if we filter that and we look at the data for folks who live in our in that school district who who speak what language at home and their level of proficiency. Do those things kind of, are we aware of this? I mean, this is kind of stuff where if you live here or you've worked here or you serve this population, a lot of this stuff seems obvious, but I don't feel like it's okay to have a conversation where you assume that we can take these kinds of things for granted without having some sort of support for it. So we felt like bringing this stuff to light was really important. We also, I mentioned, we looked at our internal data and the the challenges with using just an ethnicity demographic. We wanted to mimic that same cut language spoken at home. We happen to have that for adult schools, our adult school students. So we we pulled that and we looked at it and we looked at how it's changed year over year. And how does that compare to what we're seeing at the uh, from other sources besides our internal data like ACS and stuff like that? Somebody asked if the slides uh, were these slides presentations done in your monthly steering committee meetings? No, and I'm not sure. Your name's just as iPhone, so I I hate to not be able to refer to you by your name, but that is a great question. This all, most of this discussion was relevant was was had at the these data study sessions that we do quarterly. Did we do summaries for data for the steering committee meetings on this stuff? Or was it just a, hey, come to the data study session later because we're going to do this and it's going to be great? Elsa, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I think mo- most if not all of this was done during the data study sessions. When we talked about the three year plan in our monthly steering committee meetings, we focused more on the goals and objectives and strategies in the plan and data conversations were typically um, deferred to our quarterly data study sessions.
I was going to say relegated, but I feel like that has a negative connotation. So and I don't want to throw my own data study session under the bus like that. So I will say um, cordoned off where it can't hurt anyone else with lots of graphs. We just looking at, this is where I I was supposed to segue nicely into like, well, it's great if we all sit around in a room and talk about this stuff, but we need the people in the meeting to be engaged. So um, we gave them homework. There's this really cool utility called the California Healthy Places Index. We're going to share the link at the end because if we put it in the chat now and you click on it, you will not hear another word that I say because you will be way too interested in this cool website. But we essentially what we did was we we said, hey, everybody, there's this thing called the Cal- California Healthy Places Index. It gives us a um, a multi uh, a multi-factor index at a zip code level for the entirety of the state of California to enable us to look in very small chunks of our region and see what are of what eight to 10 different factors that amalgamate into a healthy place index. We wanted everybody to to go to this website and find their school and ask themselves these questions. So that's that's a big part of these data study sessions was it enabled us to to engage our community and and while I say our community as in our our consortia community in the exercise of doing some of this work and coming back with their thoughts. So what's your story? And and it's not super detailed like, uh, you know, a 101 class where like, tell me what percentage of students in the in five of the zip codes you serve need blank. It was just how did, how do you fit into the story of that particular region? We're supposed to serve the students who live near us. You know, we're in the Bay Area. There's there's no nothing, if not consistent, is the thing called traffic, but everything is relatively close together. So we have how many school sites within a 20 minute drive if there's no traffic? Maybe like five? So functionally, you know, it it isn't quite as simple as as that, but we do want people to be aware of what's going on around them. So we ask people to go do the homework and come back with questions. So that was what we did in September. In November, by this point, we had received the Cape fact sheet. And this was something that we loved because it took all that super grindy work we did in ACS and and West Ed and Cape Tap, you got, I I'm not sure who to thank for this. You all did it for us. So it it really, it took um, more hours than I'd like to admit in front of Ilsa off of my plate and allowed me to just focus on what are the numbers and what do they mean? So it's very, very cool, very, very, and a very necessary set of tools, I would say, because we happen to have the bandwidth to to engage in super deep analysis of all of those external sources. I think a lot of folks don't. Running schools is hard. Bandwidth is super tight. You're focused on how come this classroom has water coming through the ceiling and what happened to, and I haven't had that ESL teacher for a week. What am I going to do? Not, hey, let me take two hours out of my day and go look at the ACS data for the last five years for the zip codes in my region and do a deep analysis. That's what we're here for. But being able to supplement that with resources, I think was is both necessary, but also really awesome. So big shout out to them for doing that. We wanted to take people on a guided tour for that. We we talked, we won't get in super deep, but we found some a little bit more clarity on aligning our internal data. When Kate drops numbers on us, we get to go back and look at our historical data and see how well did we match up? Turns out at the end of the day, we did pretty well, um, but we had to go through a little bit of definitional rigmarole to to understand how we got there. We continued the regional need analysis and we also, this was a chunky meeting. We dove into LMI data, so we summarized that and we started to set the table for the metric selection. So this is, this was the exact slide from that said, where, hey, we're going to go through this. Let's take a quick tour and we literally walked people through that together, which I thought was a really valuable use of our time. This is a great way to make sure everybody in our, everybody who's there knows that this resource is there. Maybe you don't get the Cape newsletter, you know, there's so many ways to miss this kind of stuff. We continued, we we did a breakout activity that was a direct follow up from the Healthy Places Index activity that I mentioned. We asked our schools to select fiber zip zip codes that they think the consortiums should be serving based on their previous work. We had them put all their answers and their questions and their zip codes into a Google Doc. And then we collected that. This is a screenshot of what the Healthy Places Index looks like. Spoiler alert, dark blue means it's the least, it's in the bottom quartile for health. Dark green means it's in the top. And if I, for those of you who are familiar with the region, this kind of looks like we would expect, like there's a lot of micro regions in East San Jose and Central San Jose that that struggle with um, with educational level attainment, number of bachelor's degree, distance to grocery stores, stuff that contributes to the overall health of people who live there. We wanted people to draw a line between where is their need for education and where do our students live that we currently serve? This is directly out of what the plan was asking us to do. During the break, we pulled all that data from the breakout where people had identified the zip codes and we did a density map in Tableau of where the students from that we're serving. So the size of the circle is where our students from and red. And red was like, hey, did, did we as a group choose to, 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 to look at that zip code as a place that we isolated? Referencing it back to here, it's kind of tough because they're not quite at the same zoom. We did a pretty decent job. I don't want to make anybody dizzy. I'm gonna only flip it one more time. But this was a really valuable exercise to go through as a group. And to give us a bit of reassurance, like, hey, we are serving students from the areas that we need as well as students from a lot of areas nearby. Because we know that just because this area is green, doesn't mean that nobody needs us in that area. That's another part of the story. So really enjoyed that exercise. Do you want to drop a few notes on here? And then I'm, I'm, I think I'm moving a little slower than I wanted to, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just take one minute here to talk about labor market. There's obviously a lot to say about labor market information, but we, we rely on our workforce boards to provide us with labor market information. We had them come and present to our steering committee about in-demand occupations. Work to Future is one of the workforce boards serving our area. But we also relied on data from the Centers of Excellence and from the, from the ONET website. Most importantly, it is, as you all know, it's, it's expensive to live in California. Overall, it's even more expensive to live in the Bay Area, so we felt like we had to make some choices. When we were looking at labor market information and apply some filters that would allow us to zoom in on those occupations and by extension, training programs that would give people in our community the best shot at thriving in this expensive area. So we applied some filters that were looking at annual earnings that were at or greater than 70,000 a year that had more than 100 projected annual job openings and that would require a bachelor's degree or less so that we could tie it back to our adult schools and non-credit community college programs. So that gave us a list of 39 opportunity occupations, as we call them, for our consortium, for our region. And then we crosswalk that with our CTE matrix, which is an inventory of our programs that we have that are offered in our consortium. So that gave us, you know, the, the star you see in the graphic is what we call our sweet spot for program development or focus. And that's that area where employer engagement, LMI overlaps with our internal capacity to do things and the need and the interest of our community. So it is, it's an art, it's both art and science to, to identify that sweet spot. But it gave us some direction as to which, which sectors to prioritize in our next three-year plan. And that's, I'm happy to talk more about that. If anyone has, has questions, feel free to contact me via email and I can share more about that process.
Yeah, that was, I mean, it was just insanely valuable to do that as a group. And and to do it in multiple places, faculty work groups. I mean, it was, it was hugely foundational to our understanding of like, what do we already offer? What do we need to offer? Where are, where's our gaps in that? So I mean, it was just, it was a really critical component to this regional need exercise was, yeah, if we identify the need and the students we're serving, what are we going to do about it? That's where this data comes in. So it was absolutely huge. I'll just whip right through this. We also introduced the metrics the way they're stated in the three-year plan. February, we went way deep on that because we felt like the material that was coming out in the draft plans, it was still a little bit unclear what, how things were categorized and, and what it was going to actually shake out to look like in NOVA. So February was really about these metrics. Do we understand what they mean? Do we, we had a really rich discussion about how it felt wrong to only think about whether or not a student hit 12 hours. And and that, some people were almost offended by that idea, like, that doesn't mean anything. That doesn't mean we helped them, that, that's just an accountability checkpoint. And we were kind of like, that's fair. And that's why we need to get good at these outcome measures. Because the state is asking us to understand the level that, to which we engage a student beyond just a service or a couple hours of enrollment, but up to that 12-hour mark. Why we, they chose 12? I don't know. I could guess, but why bother? We still need to understand that that's a thing. So it was a really good conversation. It also was a really rich discussion from our practitioners about these optional metrics. Progress metrics, transition metrics, award, like, outcome, more traditional outcome metrics, like, did they achieve HSE, something like that? And to, to, to give them an opportunity to give their thoughts on which of these metrics are they good at? EFL gains, stuff like that, that's old hat for Rioa Schools. Relatively easy to calculate at the community colleges if you look at course progression. So most folks got that stuff. Transitions, we had apologies. We, transitions, we, we, we only had the definitions from the state to go on, looking at the Launch Board MDD and trying to suss that out. How are we going to calculate this? That is not a ready piece of, of data that we have access to. So those were some of those areas where we, we wanted to have a discussion with our stakeholders about what is, what are those things? And is it worth it to try to track them, hearkening all the way back to the conversation Ilsa was having with us about the philosophy of choosing something that we don't yet know how to track? Or that we may not even be capable of tracking because we don't have the right lens that the state, we can't always back out the state's number because we can't look across the whole state to see where Rick, who took ESL, moved to San Mateo and enrolled at Curis School. If I'm just looking at my own internal data, I'm not going to know where I ended up, but the state will. So are we ever going to get those numbers to match? Do we have to get them to be perfect? I don't think so. So those were a really good opportunity to start having those conversations. It also gave our data of community practice time to chime in with a lot more specificity about where the documentation needs to be and what's still unclear, as well as sort of like the conflict between serving all the students and the accountability struggles of, of following up in two quarters and four quarters when students do not really want to fill out that survey to a high degree. It was, it was really rich conversation and it was great to be able to bring that back into the data study session. So February was a lot of talking and a lot of making sure we were on the same page. May was big because we had, this was our roundup. So we just had this meeting last Friday. We had met, as Ilsa mentioned earlier, we met with each member individually with recommendations for which of the optional metrics that we thought aligned to our strategies and activities, as well as were aligned to our regional need. And wanted to get their take on which of these optional metrics align with your WASC or, you know, your SIP plans and the stuff that you're already doing. Because you're already being held accountable by a variety of factors. So let's not add complexity to that unless you want to. Let's not reinvent the wheel if we don't have to. We also, it gave us a chance to talk about how are we going to select goals? We don't really have three years of historical data. We have 20, 1920 data that has been shifting a bit here and there as the, as the new data drops in. Some of that data we don't have because of the way it's calculated, i.e. transitions needing that data and the subsequent year to be calculatable. And 2021 was, was a hot mess. Just to sort of summarize Anne's question, community colleges did not all choose to track attendance the same way. So a new rule was applied to specific years, which basically throws out the hours component for community colleges. It's hard to forecast off that number because in reality, that probably wasn't the case. 21, 22, we had Omicron in spring, like, things are crazy. We don't have a steady state environment on which we can forecast. So we had a, on which we could forecast in a traditional sense. So we tried to have a really rich, we were able to have a really rich discussion with each of our members about how they felt comfortable setting goals in this uncertain environment. And what philosophy did they choose? Were they going to be conservative? Were they going to try to do a percent increase every year and let those chips fall where they may? Were they operating with programmatic restrictions that they knew they weren't going to be able to add capacity until a year down the line? And then they were going to step up, so like a nonlinear goal-setting strategy? Just the best freaking meetings. I can't even tell you, they were so good. So if I, if I don't, if you don't believe me, I hope my passion is showing through because they were really awesome. And I wish, we would love to have them every year. Hopefully we can. I would say that we also explained, we, we needed a tracker to track all this before I get too tunneled on how much fun that was. All the members are setting goals. We, we have a NOVA platform that we have to enter stuff into and that has its own operational challenges. How are we going to keep track of all this stuff? We needed, it, it was made clear to us by both the need and by suggestions from like Neil and other, other presentations we saw from the state, that we really needed a tracker to support this goal-setting. Both as a place to contain our, the data we're getting from the state, our own internal data, and there are goals as we progress over the next three years. So we built a big giant tracker because we're data nerds and we like spreadsheets. So we, at the meeting, we, we, we walked through that tracker and showed sort of the idea behind its job. We discussed the outcome of everybody's meetings and we tried to come to some sort of discussion around consortia level goal-setting. Because remember, individuals served and barriers, those are consortia level goals. You can't really have a rich conversation with each member individually without having the conversation at the group level. So that's what we did in May. We tried to, again, I love my pictures and my flow charts. So we level set in May with this picture, which was, what do we have control over and what do we not have control over? We have control over our local systems, we have control over our downstream systems. Launch Board is downstream from that. We don't have any control over that. Data shows up there 10 months later. NOVA is getting its data from Launch Board. It's not super clear when the Launch Board data is going to show up in NOVA. Turns out it's like, maybe like two weeks, maybe four weeks, 20-something days if, if the cycle remains the same. But we didn't really know at the time when we built this material. So we wanted to illustrate that the tracker's job is to bridge this gap and give us a one-stop shop for all of our information. So we wanted to draw a picture for everybody about why we were doing what we were doing. I love that we're in a group where when you say, hey, we're putting all of our data together in one place, so we have a research tool. Nobody gets funny about that. Nobody feels some type of way. It's a data team tool. Everyone has access to their own member-level spreadsheet. We have access to the whole tracker. The degree to which we're going to share that all around is, is, you know, we're still working on how this is going to go from quarter to quarter every year, every, every, every term going forward at the study sessions. But it's, it's just exciting for people to be like, I'm, yeah, I'm cool. Put all, put all of our numbers together and let's look at this and see what happens. We, we, we're very fortunate that our members are very, are very cooperative in that regard. We had a really great conversation about how, when the 2021 data dropped in Launch Board, the 2019, 20 data changed a lot at, in certain regards. The, the individual served number changed drastically and some of the college metrics were adjusted. The adult school metrics stayed relatively the same. We also got a chance to have that, we had that conversation as a group, as well as what I just mentioned about attendance at the college level. Because that's something that folks need to be aware of. They're going to see numbers in these trackers that don't look a lot like the numbers that they see in our quarterly reports. And there's a reason for that. So we need people to be aware of those things. We literally showed this slide and had a group conversation, a very good conversation about, as a consortium, what goals should we be setting for individuals served? Knowing that we don't have all of 21, 22 yet, are we going to have an, are we going to set aggressively? Are we going to be conservative because we don't see students maybe coming back the way we want to? Are we going to meet somewhere in the middle? What are our thoughts on that? It was an awesome group discussion. We had somebody pipe in like, we need to hit 20 by 20, 20K by 25. And someone else was like, I don't know if we're going to be able to do that. So having that conversation as a group, instead of us as, you know, like Ilsa's consortia lead, just saying, I think we should do blank. What do you all think? Was really awesome. We also were able to show everyone what metrics, what optional metrics did each of us pick? Some were shared by all, some were not shared by all. And we were able to have a nice discussion here about this. Let's see. How am I doing? Yeah, we're doing okay for the last couple of minutes. I do want to leave a minute or two at the end for questions. I wanted to leave a little more time than that, but I talked fast and now a lot of slides. So this is what we covered. Where we go from here is to continue refining this until we get our numbers in NOVA. Hopefully by the end of the week, next week. And then we can have everybody certify and move on. And I, I think we all feel super good about how this whole year, the cadence of this year went in terms of setting the table, getting the buy-in and, and moving forward with actually getting goals down on paper and in NOVA. So what comes next for us? The challenges and how to get better. So effectiveness of these sessions is always limited by, I mean, it's going to always be limited by COVID going forward until we get four or five years down the line, we're always going to be dancing around this data. Turnover with our own staff. Every, every time we do this, we have to kind of like, always be mindful that this is somebody, two people, three people's first time ever hearing any of this. The bandwidth for deep analysis is, is low. It's lower than we want it to be. We have a million really complicated research questions we want to ask. We don't always have time to try to do all, to try to do all of it. Those are just some of the things that we, we're always going to be bumping into as we go forward and trying to jump over, push our way, knock our way through those barriers. We're going to track everything internally going forward. We're going to, we're going to pivot from our trusty seat count participant metrics into these new goals and metrics going forward. While we learn how to track the ones we don't know how to track, these are mostly headcount metrics. So how does that translate into people's literacy, new visualizations? Do we keep the old ones? We're not completely settled on how that's going to go, but we know that we've been given the framework for how these data study sessions should go moving forward. The one thing that we know for sure, transitions, transitions, transitions. That has to be the biggest focus because we will get access to our internal data much more quickly. And to be able to, to use that as a lever, where are, I mean, this is all about helping students, right? This whole conversation's been really administrative and in the weeds. But what helps our students the fastest is understanding what they're taking, where they're transitioning, where they're getting stuck and how that translates into why they wanted to be with us in the first place. So we see our path forward as actually being quite simple. And that's a lot, especially here at the end. This is it. We've made it to the end of hearing me talk. What kinds of questions do you have? If you have one and it feels super long, feel free to put it in the chat. I know our, our good friends at Cape Tap will share them with us. And we will be able to connect with folks offline. Given we only have a couple of minutes, but we do have a couple of minutes. Corey, you're on mute. And apologies if I pronounced that wrong.
That's perfect. Corey, I'm here first. Thank you so much. This is so awesome. I can listen to this for quite a, I just, this is so informative and I appreciate how much you just work to collaborate. Two questions. The internal tracker, is that a person, a body of people? Or does anybody insert their data in this? And the second one is, where, how do you, what's, what's your philosophy? Or what's the course of the philosophy with respect to consortium with conservative growth? Progressive growth? Okay, those that don't want, those that see the circumstances in their era as, no, let's wait it out versus initiatives that, well, no, to, to grow. So I wanted your feedback on that.
That's an awesome question. I would say, first thing, we have, we have, the tracker is a system of sheets in Google Sheets. One big giant sheet where things start. Each of those, the tables for members are broken out and separated into, into different sheets. They're shared with their members. That's worked on with them transactionally. When, when that gets to a certain cut point, it gets dumped back into the master sheet. So it's the data team and consortium and Ilsa as the, as the sort of the, the conductors of how that works and when. So that we can be sure we don't have version control issues and stuff like that. Functionally, everyone, there's no reason why everyone can't have access to it. Most of our members will prefer to transact with their data and, and let it be at that. Second is, it depends on who you ask if they want to be conservative. We heard every, every hypothetical you just posited, we heard someone say it in that conversation. We, the need is here, we need to, we want to shoot high and be aggressive. We have the capacity. All the way to, I, I'm having a really hard time hiring teachers. I don't see students flowing back. We don't know what's going on with COVID. People, it's, people are leaving, housing prices are insane. I don't think we're going to add, we're going to get back to where we were before COVID until 24, 25. And then us in the middle saying, well, there's a, there's, it's good to be aspirational, it's good to be realistic. But the point of setting a goal, and I think this was key to frame, the point of setting a goal isn't how close you are to hitting it. The point of setting a goal is, is where did you end up getting and why? Why didn't you get to the goal you thought you got is just as valuable? Why didn't you get to the goal you thought you got is just as valuable as how close you were able to nail it. Especially if I, if I choose to operate in the environment to believe the Cape Office when they say, there isn't a Cape data police. We're not, we're not assessing you on your ability to set and hit a goal. Which I'm grateful for because I feel like that's, that's its own skillset that's totally separate from delivering adult education outcomes. Does that make sense? I feel like it's not a super satisfying answer, but I believe in it very strongly.
No, that makes sense. Thank you. No, it's, I, I do appreciate that because particularly with legislation coming down a pipeline and the great initiatives and also funding. I mean, we look at the, the, the latest release and it's that, it's either, and how managing those perceptions and perspectives and the goals. So I do thank you because it's very helpful and to be neutral and yet progressive and to use all the data and translate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks for the question. I think we have to kick it to, back to our friends Holly and, and Mandali, right? We're out of time. We're over.
We are, we are over. Mandali did have to step out, so I will be closing it out today. I want to take a moment and just send a huge thanks to Rick and Elsa. This is, this was, I mean, you guys are just doing amazing work. You always do. But it was nice to be able to highlight all the work, the time and effort you've put into this and to be able to openly share it for our other consortium members to hopefully learn from, glean from and move forward. Rick, I know you and I've had multiple conversations on the data. You really are just, I mean, you are the data go-to guy. So I appreciate that. And Elsa, you too. The work you guys have done is, is truly inspiring. So with that, we are getting a request. It looks like in the chat I got a request, they would like to know if the, if your slides are able to be shared. And that came to me privately, so you guys probably won't see it.
Yeah, we can do that. I'll spin through and make sure, because like I said, I pulled some from old decks. I'll make sure that there aren't any weird linked comments to sheets that are internal and stuff like that. So give me a, by the end of the day tomorrow to clean them up and I'll get them over to you.
Okay. And then so once what we'll do is I will send an email out to everyone who was registered. We will have to remediate the slides to make sure that they're 508 compliant. That does take a little bit of time. We are recording this presentation. It will be uploaded to our website once it is back from the third-party vendor. As soon as we get the slides remediated though, I will send an email to everyone with another link for the evaluation because your feedback is so valuable to us and we will include the slides. Once the recording is posted, we will then email you one more time just to let you know that it's up on the website with the link of where you can find it. So that will hopefully, yes, the slides would be most welcome. I think that you guys shared a lot of information and they would be very much valuable. So with that, I think that we're ready to close out. Is there any last question or comment, Rick from Elsa or anyone else?
Just thank you. Thank you for allowing us to share what we've learned along the way. And we're always happy to, to share our resources and feel free to reach out to us individually if you have any follow-up questions. We're, we're all in this together. Thanks all.
Yes, and they did put their email addresses in the chat. I will go ahead and copy it down one more time for everyone to see. It'll be the last thing in the chat. And you can always click the three dots to the right of the chat to download it to your computer. That way you have it available. So with that, we will go ahead and close out. I hope everyone has a great rest of your day. And again, to Rick and Elsa, thank you so much for, for being willing to present and share your information with us.
Thank you.
All right. Bye you guys.
Bye y'all.